Good evening. Welcome to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, May 22, 2023. Time is 5:31 PM. I will do a roll call from my far left, Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Councilmember Storset.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lickens.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
And Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Great. If you would all please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Squawsh Band of the Pialp Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Before I ask if there are changes to the agenda, I actually wanted to make the public aware of some changes that we announced last council meeting that we're starting tonight, which is we will be accepting public comment right after any changes to the agenda. This public comment is for consent agenda items and anything else that is not a business item on the agenda tonight. So hopefully that will enable some people to not have to stay for the whole meeting. If you would like to just give public comment and then go, you are free to do that. Or we of course would love you to stay. So council, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? Or actually, I'm going to see, I'm already in autopilot from how it's been for the last year plus. So I will now open public comment on consent agenda items and items not on the agenda this evening. So if anyone would like to come forward and provide public comment, you'll have three minutes to speak. And if you could please state your full name and home address for the record, please. All right. Oh, do we need to have them turn the microphone on or it's on? Okay.
Reception that we had, there it is. Thank the council for the wonderful reception we had prior to this meeting and just state for the record. My gratitude, and I know along with my colleagues in the room, Senator Randall and Representative Calder. Our gratitude to the city, to city staff, to city leadership for the input, the guidance, the help throughout this last legislative session. As you all know, there are many things on our agenda in the legislature that had a direct impact on the, on the cities and the way cities operate. And so we are very grateful for your voices helping to guide us in the policymaking that we do in Olympia. So it's a pleasure to be back home now after the legislative session. Thank you very much for all you do for this community and it is a pleasure to partner with you in leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on a consent agenda item or another item not on the agenda? Okay, thank you to those watching online. Oh, there is one. Okay. Sorry. I did not see you coming up. And if you could please state your full name and home address for the record, please.
Edward Nadler, 9401 North Harborview Drive. A question with regards to the council study session minutes from May 11. So there was some discussion among other items. The possibility of issuing a bond for some of the park projects, for funding of the park projects. I know it's going to be considered. There were a number of projects discussed at the time. There was also, or among them being the sports complex. And during that conversation, there was some discussion about partnership with the YMCA. And the YMCA had notified the city that in all likelihood, it wasn't going to meet its obligation for funding for Phase 1A. I understood from the meeting, there were ongoing conversations with the YMCA. So kind of two questions I had was if council or staff can provide an update as to the status of the conversations with the YMCA on that part. And then I understand there is a capital reserve fund built into the lease. Just wondering what the status of that fund is, what the balances of it might be. Along with all the conversations with the YMCA, whether it's appropriate for an answer tonight or at some future date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that we'll be discussing that on Thursday at the study session. Is that correct, city administrator?
Yes, we will be discussing that at Thursday's study session, and I'm also happy to discuss that with you after this meeting.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak tonight? Okay, I will turn to our online audience. Thank you again for watching this evening. If you would like to give public comment on the consent agenda or any item not on the agenda this evening, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and ask council if there are any changes to the consent agenda this evening. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't see any lights on. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, council. So we have a couple of presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation for Public Works Week. We have several of our crew here today. I'm so glad that you're here. I would like to read this from here and then if you all could join me down front for a photo after I read this, and I will like to present this to Director Langholm. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Gig Harbor. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Gig Harbor. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals and the engineers, managers and employees of the city of Gig Harbor, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our city's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, now therefore be it resolved that I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, as Public Works Week in the city of Gig Harbor, and I encourage all residents to join me in paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 22nd day of May, 2023. All right, if you guys want to join me up front and then council, if you want to stand and kind of group together behind. We have amazing staff. All right, our second presentation is from the Downtown Waterfront Alliance. I am happy to welcome Executive Director Kariann Eckberg to provide an update to us. Welcome, Kariann. Thanks for being here tonight. Yeah.
All right. Oh, it's on.
There you go.
Before I get started, I just wanted to take a quick second to introduce our board president. More of the business owners than I do. She's been introducing me to them. So that's been fun. She started two weeks ago and she's taking over for Josh Sherwood, who is retiring actually on Thursday after I think 12, 13 years with the alliance. So we have Heidi Gerling, who was our previous market manager. She's kind of moved into more of a marketing and resource coordinator position. And then this year we have a contractor doing the farmer's market. He was actually there last year. And he was kind of the day of support and he has kind of taken on that role for us this year. So if you are down at the market and you see him running around, you'll see all of us down there. Please say hi. So we are a new team, which I think is a good thing. Sometimes we're going to talk everything that the alliance has been doing and all the things that we've learned. And then we've got some new ideas and some kind of different and unique perspectives, I think, that we bring as a new team. So we're excited to put that out to the universe and see where it goes. Next slide. Okay, so where we been? These are some of our highlights from 2022. I think that I'm just going to hit a couple of the key points on this slide. Our volunteer hours. That is a lot of volunteer hours. 2,514 volunteer hours from last year, and I expect it to be more this year. So if you take that and equate that to dollars, that's over $90,000 that our volunteers equate to. So I'm just saying that so that you guys know, we could not do what we do without our volunteers. They are kind of the backbone of the organization. They work with us through four committees. And then also just in general, we have a robust volunteer program and we continue to expand that because without them, we couldn't do all of the events that we do. The other thing I wanted to highlight too is that last year the alliance received three excellence on main awards. So those are the Washington State Main Street kind of annual award. And one of those was Carrie Polinsky, who you guys probably know from Tickle Pink. She was the volunteer of the year. Mary Damaris was the executive director of the year. And then a program that Mary started called Main Street Through a Child's Eyes won an award for a program as well. So really great. I was lucky to come into an organization that's well established and had some amazing projects and events already going on. And so being able to take that into the future is really exciting for me. All right, next slide. Okay, so the next one you're going to see is kind of where we are now. So we are going to continue to do all of the events that you love and all of the programs that you love in Gig Harbor. So Restaurant Week, Farmer's Market, walking tours are back this year after a three-year hiatus. Those are starting up June 10. We have a Wednesday and a Saturday tour. We're excited to partner with the Harbor History Museum and Harbor Wild Watch to bring those back. Sip and stroll, which if any of you guys were around for that day, it was craziness in a good way downtown. A lot of you volunteered, so thank you for your support there. Girls Night Out, the flower baskets, which are actually being delivered tomorrow. So you will see those up in the next couple of days. We have 31 volunteers that wake up at 4:30 in the morning every day to water those. They're amazing. We did a little volunteer training. They love it. I'm not an early riser, so I don't know how to love it, but they do. And thank goodness for them because otherwise those beautiful baskets wouldn't be there. Some of the things that we did a little bit differently with these events and we're going to kind of continue to move towards is I'm kind of a digital person. I used to have a marketing and social media business. And we put together for Restaurant Week, a digital dining guide. We did some Facebook and Instagram promotions. And we saw a really good increase in participation. We reached out to the businesses and, and they saw an increase in revenue and things like that. And so we're focusing on Farmer's Market sip and stroll sold out, sold out within 48 hours. So we're going to continue to build on that with some marketing and social media tools that we didn't have in the past. So I think that'll be good going forward. Chalk the Harbor is coming up. We're going to continue to do the veterans banners. We're going to continue to do, like I said, Girls Night Out, Halloween, and then try to add in a couple of other programs and things like that. And I'll talk about that more in the where we're going. Next slide. All right, just a little look kind of our income expenses. First of all, I have to say, thank you so much for your BNO tax credit contribution. That literally makes up the majority of our BNO tax. We really appreciate that and we couldn't do that without you. So we're excited to partner with the city on that continuing forward in the future. We're in a good position to grow. There are some things I think that we can make some changes to. If you look at our special events income versus expenses, they're pretty close together. I would like to see those numbers a little bit different, if that makes sense. So we're going to look on ticket pricing and kind of how we're marketing and advertising and can we expand the events and make them a little bit bigger without getting too big? So we're looking at kind of that stuff. A couple of things we're focused on too is grants and sponsorships. Post-COVID grants have kind of gone away. They don't really exist anymore. And so we're looking at other ways to find funding that doesn't rely on that post-COVID grant money. So other grants and other sponsorships. And so we're really trying to vamp up that kind of local sponsorship program as well, reaching out to some of the bigger businesses in the area to help bring in some funding that way so that we can continue the events and also add some new things and grow. Okay. Next slide. All right, this is my favorite. This is going big. I'm a big thinker. So sometimes people have to run me in a little bit and I love it. So we're going to take a look at all the events that we're doing and make sure that they meet the mission of the organization. Do they really bring economic vitality downtown? Do they preserve the historic character? And are they bringing the community together? So if they're not doing that, then we're going to find a way to tweak those events or replace them with ones that we think better fit the mission. So far, I feel like the events do a pretty good job of that, but there's some things that we can tweak to make sure that we're really inclusive of all of the downtown businesses, the community, the members, reaching out to a lot of the retirement communities to bring them downtown too. So more to follow on that, but I'm excited about that. We're taking a focused effort on some long-term issues that I know have been an issue since I've been in Gig Harbor, which has been several years. Several of you actually are part of our ad hoc parking committee. So thank you for those of you guys who are on that. It was actually pretty fun. I was have to say, it was one of the most fun subcommittees I've been to. You wouldn't think that, but it was. A lot of things that we do, parking surveys twice a year, and we have great information that comes out of those. And we don't always do a great job of actually doing something with that. So we're actually going to do something with that information and try to address some of the low hanging fruit with parking so that we can make it easier to spell some rumors. Because yes, there is parking downtown to get people to come downtown with signage and things like that. So you'll see that coming soon. And then also we have a survey subcommittee, which is really important because my goal is to put together a rough marketing plan for the alliance and for downtown. And we can't really do that unless we know where people are coming from, why they're coming, how often they're coming. And so we're partnering with another business. One of our committee members was, was nice enough to be able to support us through his business. And we're putting together a survey that's going to run through the summer and it'll be in all of the businesses downtown. It's a digital survey with QR code. And it's going to give us a lot of this data and information. And then we're going to continue to run that survey seasonally because things change here from summer to winter. So look for that data. I'll be sharing that with you as well as that comes out. And that's going to help drive the way that we market and how we're marketing and who we're marketing to. And who are we leaving out? There are people that aren't coming downtown that we want to come downtown and we have to figure out who that is. So that will be happening as well. And then our goal is also to collaborate with other local businesses, other local nonprofits. We had a crime prevention summit here not that long ago. I've held a business brainstorming session to kind of get an idea from the businesses of what they are seeing downtown, what they want, what their struggles are. And then we also have our first kind of round table. We've renamed it What's Up Downtown? And that is happening June, I think it's the 14th, and it'll be at Anthony's Restaurant. We've been invited all the business owners to come down and hear what's up downtown. So the city will be there, Public Works, the city administrator, and then the alliance and some other folks as well. So lots more to come in the future. Next, please. All right, so where are we going? Increased social media, more marketing and outreach, possibly some other events. More communication. I find if you communicate and you think you're communicating enough, then you're probably barely communicating. So over-communication I find is the right way to go when it comes to events, when it comes to getting information out there. So you should start to see stuff on Facebook, on Instagram, in your email, blogs. We just started a blog actually a couple of weeks ago and we're going to try to do that on a weekly or, you know, bi-monthly basis. So just to get the information out there on multiple platforms, multiple different ways, so that we're having that max reach, if that makes sense. Increased collaboration. We talked about that. I've been able to collaborate with so many of you already and I really appreciate that. And we're going to continue those efforts into the future. And I also want more hands-on engaging activities for families too. I want, there's great opportunities to bring families downtown, but there could be more for, you know, for kids. I have kids that are six and eight. And there's other kids that are a little bit older and let's find some ways, creative ways with scavenger hunts and fun activities consistently so that those parents want to bring their kids downtown. So we're going to keep up with that. Also outreach and communication, hoping to be at as many speaking engagements and different opportunities such as this to talk to people about the alliance in the downtown and all of the great things that are happening down here. So next slide. So really at the heart of what we do at a small businesses, that's the whole reason that we exist downtown. That's why the alliance is here. And we are focused on really helping them, right? What are we doing that's bringing the businesses downtown? Are the events that will bring people downtown? Are they actually shopping and staying and eating and enjoying the downtown when they're doing it? Are we providing the support and resources to the businesses that they need to be effective and to, you know, be profitable downtown? Is it easy for them to have a business downtown? I don't know. Maybe it is. Maybe it isn't. We're, we're trying to find all this information. Is it affordable, right? I think that's a key question. And it may not be super affordable right now. So how do we fix that, right? What can we do to mitigate that? Are they educated? Do they have the resources that they need to sustain the long term? So there's not turnover every year or two with businesses downtown? What can we do to help them? And what can we do to get people to come downtown? So kind of my big goal for the organization in 2024 is to create a micro grants program. So it's going to require a little bit of capital funding. We'll have to figure out a way to get that. But I've got some ideas already where as a business, then you come to me as an alliance, you know, business and you need a, a new website or you need new paint or you need something breaks and you can't afford to fix it, right? Or you need new furniture for your outdoor seating. You can apply for a grant through us and we can, we can fund that for you. So then it really is all the money that comes into us through the events and things like that. And we're able to really give that back in a monetary way to the businesses. So they feel the support even more so. So that's going to get that up the ground. We'll start small. A lot of Main Street organizations do that. And I'm hoping that we can do that and expand and grow on that too in the future. So big goal for 2024, but we'll get there. Next. All right, how can you help? You already do an amazing job. I've only been here for four months and I already feel the support. So I really appreciate that. But just continue, obviously the funding support, we appreciate that and we'd love that to continue. The outreach and ideas, I am happy. Come to me with the ideas that you have. And let's find a way to implement some of them because I'm just one person and my brain is only so big and I only have so many ideas. And I found a lot of great ideas from just talking to people and having coffee and collaborating. So continue that. Awareness, share about the alliance, share about the downtown, connect us to local business owners or organizations that you think we can partner with that can help us or vice versa. And then just communicate with the business owners, go in and talk to them. Ask them questions to spell some rumors because there are some rumors going around out there. Ask questions and let's find ways to simplify the processes for them to make it easier for them to operate downtown. And we're doing that already through some of those subcommittees I talked about. Listen, engage the business owners, learn about some of their hardships. Some of you may have had businesses in the past, some of you may have not, but it's always just good to sit and chat with them. I find that I learn a lot by just having a 15-minute conversation on a random Tuesday with a business owner who's open and nobody's in their shop. Just go down and chat. So I encourage you all to do the same. All right, next slide. All right, that is it. Do you guys have any questions for me? I know it was a lot of information and we'll make sure that you have the slides, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have if you do.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. See you again. So what are you seeing with other small towns? You and I spoke a little bit, but we know that some small towns are struggling a bit. It's quieter than normal. And I think there's a few reasons for that. And I was just curious if you would share that with us.
Yeah, I think a lot of, it's not just Gig Harbor and we're doing pretty good. But a lot of the other small towns in Washington are struggling with, you know, the post-COVID kind of effects because all of the loans and the funding and the support that was there just went away. It's gone. Doesn't necessarily mean that the people have returned, right, to support them. And so they are also feeling, you know, a little bit of that struggle. And so that's why we're seeing in a lot of other cities as well, you know, business hours are reduced and staffing, they're having staffing trouble just like we are. So we aren't alone in that. And Washington Main Street is continuing to provide us resources, but I think it's something that we have to overcome here at our level internally.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber. I'm sorry, Councilmember Storset.
Okay, thanks, Kariann. That was a great presentation. Really excited about the energy that you're bringing to this. Glad we got the slides up. It always helps. But you would have covered it just great, even if you had to flip them up. So no question. So no questions, I thought, Councilmember Julie Martin. Her question is exactly what I was thinking is, you know, what are we seeing in other cities? Not just what are they struggling with, but what's really working? And are there those things that we can do here?
Yeah, I think awareness is what's working, consistent, making sure that people are reminded what's happening down here. Even if we're just doing the smallest thing to bring people downtown through a blog post or a spotlight on a restaurant or a scavenger hunt, or maybe it's a chowder crawl in the winter. I mean, my focus is, we'll be fine during the summer. The summer is so busy. You can already see, like, the sun's out, streets are packed. But what my concern is, is October through May. And so my goal is to kind of prepare for that now and make sure that we have momentum going off of the summer into the fall and into the winter with some monthly incentives for people to come down even as the weather turns.
Did you, Councilmember Barber, you turned your light off?
I turned my light off because my question's already been asked and answered.
Great.
It was good to see you, Carrieann.
You too, thanks.
Thank you so much for that great presentation. Thank you also to John for being here and for all the great work that you guys do to support our businesses. And we're happy to partner with you and continue that partnership. So really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it, thanks, guys.
All right, I have a brief mayor's report. I am happy to report that the legislature met in a special session and passed a law, a drug law for the, known as the Blake Fix, which will take place July 1st. So drugs, drug possession and use in public will be a gross misdemeanor. That's what we were hoping that they would come away with, and they did. There are some other details regarding the diversion portion of the bill that are going to take place in August. So a little bit delayed after the initial law goes into effect, but not delayed too much. So there will be detailed, there's detailed information in the Gigabyte last week. So if you guys receive the Gigabyte newsletter, or if you'd like to sign up to receive that, there were some detailed links to a great article by Association of Washington Cities. They did a really good job of breaking down the bill and making it easy to understand what was passed. So check that out. You can also read the bill for yourself if you want some really riveting evening material to read before you go to sleep. I think it was Senate Bill, was it 5536? I believe it was. If you go to ledge.wa.gov, you can click on Bill Search and type the bill in, and you can read the whole thing. So I actually enjoy reading them now. Can't believe I do, but I actually do, but I never thought I would. So wanted to let you know about that. And then on Saturday, we had our kickoff to the, we had our community fair. Thank you to Community Development Director DeCemus. And where did, is Robin Bolster Grant still here? No. She and Carl and our planning team, along with Public Works, all worked together, but really planning and building, but on a phenomenal community fair. There was a lot, there were a lot of people here. I stopped by for just a little bit and was, I was so excited to see all of the sticky notes of comments and all the papers that people filled out to give their opinions and ideas for what they want Gig Harbor to look like in the next 20 years. So that was just the first of many public meetings and outreach sessions, open houses that we will be having. So thank you to all who came. Thank you to our amazing staff for putting that together. That was, it was really good. So looking forward to getting the data from that and getting, having that shared with council soon. So that is my report. And also, again, just thank you to our Public Works crew that are here. You guys don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to, but we are always happy to have you, so thank you. And I will now turn it over to our city administrator, Katrina Knudsen, for her report.
Thank you. I did just inform the Public Works director that that didn't mean he could go.
That's true, Jeff, you have to stay, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Three items for you this evening. One, in further celebration of wonderful achievements of city staff, I'm pleased to announce that Trey Federici, our detective sergeant, graduated with his bachelor's degree last week from Liberty University with a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies with a focus in employment, business, and government administration. So big kudos to Trey, if we can give him a round of applause. Big accomplishment for him, and I think he's going to go into his master's. So I've given, anyway, I won't talk about that. Secondly, I wanted to let the council and the public know that last Friday, our leadership team went on our first ever leadership retreat that the city has ever held for our leadership group. And this is really important, not only to further leadership competencies, but also to build team. And that is really important as we're working to have the most efficient public service possible that the leadership team is communicating and collaborating in an effective manner. And so we had a really great time. Thank you to the YMCA for hosting us at Camp Seymour. We did outdoor team building activities where people may have flown like squirrels and had to lift each other up and do on the challenge course. So it was a really fabulous time there. And then we also met in the afternoon focused on, on team building and what good, what effective, the components of an effective team and how we can further work together on that. So it was fun had by all, mandatory fun, but fun. And we look forward to doing that again next year and in future years and in further of our leadership team. And lastly, we had a wonderful meeting here in the community rooms last week regarding a creative arts district potential for the city of Gig Harbor. There are many creative districts around the state of Washington through the Washington State. Let's see, it's called Arts Wa. I don't know its exact department name. But Annette Roth, the community director with Arts Wa, came and talked about creative districts and what they can do for communities such as Gig Harbor. We, there's one in Bainbridge Island, Port Townsend, Olympia, Twisp, kind of all over the state. And they're really meant to be economic drivers and bring together artists, artisans, musicians, painters, all around a creative district that bolsters economic development for a community. And so we had about 35 people in the room that were all interested in seeing at least conversations move forward of what that may or may not look like in the city of Gig Harbor. Carrieann Eckberg, who was just at the podium, the new executive director for the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, we've had some discussions. Some of the communities in Washington have their Main Street of manage the creative district with support from the local jurisdiction. And so that's a model that we're considering. The second meeting will be upcoming soon, but I do think that this furthers the arts and culture element and the comprehensive plan, which we just met about on Saturday. And I'm excited to see where this may go. Of course, it will come to council if there's any city action needed, but wanted to inform you that the meeting was held and it was well attended. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that report. Moving into our first business item is Resolution 1277, naming the Tuall Cut Conservation Area at Donkey Creek. Suggested motion is moved to approve Resolution 1277. And I will turn this over to our Parks Manager Jennifer Harrow for her report as a, and a tag team with our Public Works Director Jeff Langham. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Merkley. So the city solicited name suggestions for the 40.5 acres that were acquired in 2022 along North Creek, AKA Donkey Creek. Acquired in three phases, and we've been calling it the North Creek Conservation Area or Salmon Heritage Area, something like that. But we received 30 name suggestions, and 11 of those suggestions contained Tuall Cut. Hopefully, I said that right. Which is the name that the first inhabitants of Gig Harbor called the, this area at the mouth of North Creek. So Parks Commission considered the entire list of names and came up with two recommendations. The Tuall Cut Conservation Area and Donkey Creek Reserve, thinking that both names highlighted different parts of the history of the area with Donkey Creek being referencing log, logging engines that were used for, for clearing the land and the mill that was on site. So when we brought this to council on May 11th, your study session did a, recommended a combination name, which is the Tuall Cut Conservation Area at Donkey Creek. So that is what is currently on the resolution. So I don't know if I need to say anything else.
Thank you so much. Any clarifying questions from council on this item? Councilmember Lichten.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, I believe we saw an email come forward from the tribe. And is, or from a tribal representative, is that correct today with a recommendation for name?
I'm not sure that I saw that one. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. I just, do you remember exactly what their recommendation for names was? Do you have that? Or we can talk about it in discussion, so.
What, one of the tribal members who also signed the letter from the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund had recommend Tuall Cut Conservation Area in the open, open portion of it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. When you look on the map of that area, of that conservation area, what is the name of the creek that shows on the map?
North Creek.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other light, any other clarifying questions? Okay, so I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. So if you're in the audience and you'd like to speak on this item, you can come forward at this time, and you will have three minutes. Okay, anyone watching online, if you would like to provide public comment on this agenda item, you can push star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, we, I will close public comment and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. The email that I saw today was from Jennifer Keating from the tribe, and her recommendation was a Tuall Cut Conservation Area, or perhaps the Tuall Cut Conservation Area at North Creek, since that is the location of this project. And I, we also had another email, I think, from someone else in our community who also suggested North Creek because, because that is what is on the map. And we all know that Donkey Creek Park is right across the street, but that is not the conservation area. I'm really interested in, in having this be the Tuall Cut Conservation Area at North Creek. So I don't know if we're ready for a motion now, but I will, I will make that motion that we name this area the Tuall Cut Conservation Area at North Creek. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Wook, seconded by Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Henderson.
I was going to make a motion too, but it's slightly different than that, so we have to.
So, yes, we need to, you can discuss or vote on the current motion.
Okay, so a discussion on this, then. The letter from Ms. Keating was, I think the first recommendation was Tuall Cut Conservation Area period. If there had to be some sort of compromise or something else, she recommended Tuall Cut Conservation Area at North Creek. I guess I would prefer to see just Tuall Cut Conservation Area. I believe it can stand on its own. Definitely would like to see the removal of, at Donkey Creek. Because it's, it's not a, it's not an appropriate term for this particular area for several reasons, but we're talking about her right now, so.
Yes, any further discussion on Councilmember Wook's motion?
Mayor, if I could just intervene. I believe Councilmember Henderson is talking about proposing an amendment to the motion that's on the table. If he wants it to just be the Tuall Cut Conservation Area, that would just be an amendment to Council Wook's motion.
Okay, would you like to make that amendment?
I would indeed to. So I move that Resolution 1277 be amended to remove the words at Donkey Creek, and I guess remove the words at North Creek.
Okay. Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Barber. Okay, so discussion on the amended motion, Councilmember Rodenbergh.
My discussion was for the original motion, when my light was on.
Oh, okay, so you want to hold your comments? Okay, Councilmember Henderson.
So some justification for removing either North Creek or Donkey Creek. I believe it's been said that the three conservation, or two of the three conservation areas being named encompass North Creek. Donkey Creek tends to refer to the segment of North Creek that runs through Donkey Creek Park itself. None of the three parcels of the conservation area, the Donkey Creek portion, the North Creek. The second thing that I had come up with was the intent of purchasing these three parcels was and is to protect the forest and aquatic habitat by placing them in a conservation easement, and thus making them unavailable for development. And we've done that. However, as we know, Donkey Creek Park is named after the donkey engine used in forestry, also known as a logging engine, was used in the late 19th and early 20th century to haul logs from where trees were felled in a central processing area. To me, it seems a little bit incongruous to add the name of a logging device to an area designated for the protection of our urban forest. Third is, Donkey Creek Park already exists as a city park and is recognized by signage already. There's no need to add it to another park or name, area name. And fourth, for me at least, the most importantly, the intent of proposing Tuall Cut Conservation Area is to honor and recognize our local Skovash history. I see no reason to minimize this recognition by adding a non-native name to the conservation area. I believe the Tuall Cut Conservation Area should and can stand on its own merit.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other lights on, so Josh, remind me, do we need to vote on the original motion, or can we vote on Councilmember Wook's motion?
We need to vote on the amendment that's been proposed by Councilmember Henderson.
Okay. So voting on the amendment proposed by Councilmember Henderson to name it Tuall Cut Conservation Area? So the attorney, I see you working on it.
Just real quick, it was an amendment to remove anything after that? And then the, depending on how that goes, then you'll vote either on it being removed or in full, which was the underlying motion originally. So it's just to remove the second half?
The at North.
That's the amendment that's being voted on right now.
Okay, so is there a second? Well, it was already seconded by Councilmember Barber. So all those, sorry.
Sorry, I have a question. Are we voting then, Daniel, on removing at Donkey Creek or at North Creek, or just one?
It was just whatever the original motion was.
Which is, okay, Tuall Cut Conservation Area at North Creek.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
So it's removal of at North Creek.
Removal of at North Creek. Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call vote for this amendment. Councilmember Wook?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodenbergh?
No.
Councilmember Starset?
No.
Councilmember Lichten?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passed. Remind me, city clerk, it's been a while since we've done a lot of amendments. Where are we in the process?
So now the motion on the table is to adopt the resolution with just the name Tuall Cut Conservation Area. So discussion is open for that until you're ready to vote on the final resolution as amended.
Point of order. My comment and my light came on before the motion was made. So my motion, or my comment is going to be moot if we vote on the motion now. So what I had to say will never get heard.
Well, we're in, we're in discussion on what was passed just now. But when I asked if you had a comment, you said you wanted to keep it until after the amendment. And so that's why I didn't have you comment at that time. Do you, do, would you like to say what you were originally going to say?
I would. At the work session, we discussed this thoroughly. Every name that Jennifer Keating put forward was discussed, it was listed in all the items that we discussed last Thursday. We discussed it at length, and we had a consensus that we would call it. Yeah, we discussed it at length, and we had a consensus that we would call it Twalcott Conservation Area at Donkey Creek. And staff here has suggested that we move that way. So, if we were just going to ignore our consensus, I think that, uh, there's quite a bit of stuff named Twalcott down there. And I think if we wanted to respect and honor a heritage, if we just called it something like Heritage Reserve, then we would be respecting and honoring the lumber creek, the, I mean, the Donkey Creek, uh, the Twalcott Tribe, and conservation in general. It could be called Heritage, and everyone could claim whatever heritage they wanted to. It would just be, uh, an umbrella for all heritages that we have here in the harbor. So, I would like to, uh, name it, either stick with what staff has recommended or change it to Heritage Reserve. And that's a motion, but we can't make a motion because there's one on the table.
Mayor, so council member Rodenberg can make another amending motion if you would like it this time for a different name, as long as it doesn't have the words at North Creek involved.
So my motion is to call it Heritage Preserve Forest, or Heritage Natural Preserve. And I hope I get a second.
We do need to have one name to.
Yeah, it has to be one or the other. So are you wanting to?
Heritage Natural Preserve.
Natural, Heritage Natural Preserve. Okay. Um, is there a second? Okay, hearing none. The original amended motion, uh, carries for Twalcott Conservation Area. Uh, council member Lykens, did you have a comment?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just wanted to say that I will be supporting this amendment. Uh, or at what we're going to be voting on. Um, I know in respect, uh, to council member Rodenberg's comments, I appreciate him bringing up our discussion from last Thursday. One of the things, though, that before we went forward on this is when you combine, I was concerned about combining a native tribal name with a non-native, and I wanted to make sure that someone from the tribe, that this was run by them before we took such a bold step to, to name something. Um, from my work with the tribes prior, and I am in no means an expert, I know that it's often considerate to ask about, you know, combining names, because a lot of times the name should be able to stand on their own. In reading this email that was received today from a member of the tribe, they talk about it being insens, to combine the names being insensitive to the native language revitalization efforts. And so after seeing that and hearing the opinion from the tribe is why I am supporting this amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councilor Rodenberg, your light is on. Okay, making sure you didn't have anything else. Okay, so. The votes are, we've, we've, I mean, we've already taken a vote on the amended motion, is that? Or now?
Uh, now we need to take the vote on the resolution itself as amended.
Okay. So, I will do a roll call vote to approve resolution twelve seventy-seven, naming it the Twalcott Conservation Area. Council member Look?
Aye.
Council member Starset?
Aye.
Council member Rodenberg?
Hey.
Council member Lykens?
Aye.
Council member Henderson?
Aye.
Council member Martin?
Aye.
Council member Barber?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six, one. Thank you, council. Okay, moving on to item two, is resolution twelve seventy-eight stating? Yes. Can we take a short break? Absolutely. Um, five or ten?
Five.
Okay, five minutes, we will re-adjourn at six, or reconvene at six thirty. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. We returned from break, the time is six thirty-two PM. And we are moving on to our second business item, which is resolution twelve seventy-three, stating the city council's determination to demolish the Masonic Lodge building and include the property in the Crescent Creek Park master planning process. Um, suggested motion is moved to approve resolution twelve seventy-eight, and I will turn it over to our Parks Manager, Jennifer Harrow. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Markley. So we are here as part of the Crescent Creek Master Planning Process, which we have, as you know, approved a contract, and we are on our way with a consultants. One of the first acts we asked them to do was to take a look at the Masonic Lodge, um, and come up with a price for how much to make it usable by the public. Um, and that number they came up with was one point seven five million approximately. Um, they had subconsultants from an architecture firm, Roluda Architects, which has a lot of experience with historic buildings, having restored a lot of buildings around the state. Um, they also contracted with PND Engineering, and both representatives from both of those firms were on hand at the May eleventh um, study session where you saw plans. The, the minimal plans to make the second floor usable by the public would move a structural wall, and which actually shrinks the usable space because of bathroom requirements for building code. Um, they would also have to do ADA improvements, but that, and that number includes just, uh, basic upgrades to make it available to the public. It doesn't actually make it, uh, like a nice fancy building at all. Um, some new flooring, windows, uh, et cetera. But, um, we've also hired consultants to look at a mold issue that was reported by the preschool. Um, and they did find several kinds of mold, but none of the really dangerous kind. Um, we had hazardous building materials company out there who looked at and, and found, looked for and found lead and asbestos, and they think there's probable PCBs in the light fixtures. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jeff, just to talk about costs.
Good evening, council. Um, first of all, I just want to clarify, the resolution you have before you tonight is not a contract that would award a demolition project. Um, we're not there yet by any means. This resolution you have rather, if approved, uh, would set the determination that council has made that the Crescent Creek Park Master Plan should consider the Masonic Lodge as no longer there when we talk with the public and the consultants about what to do with the park. And so, based on what was discussed at the May eleventh uh, meeting and the work the consultant has been doing, I just wanted to quickly share some of the concepts that the consultant has come up with to show, um, what the park could look like, uh, without the Masonic Lodge in place. And as we discussed on May eleventh, there's other options to include another building or to not include a building at all, such as this. So, I'm gonna share my screen real quick and just quickly run through those. It's hard to read what the exact, uh, thank you, Josh. So it's easier. So you can see, um, this is, I've just, they, they sent us a bunch of concepts. These, these concepts have not been reviewed by our advisory committee. It's just something the consultant has put together. Uh, they provided us many concept, I'm just gonna quickly show you four. They've listed on here a variety of, of facilities, native buffer, open lawn, playgrounds, picnic shelters, which are the boxes in red with peas, natural players, native gardens, parking, uh, with approximate number of stalls identified. Uh, they're in gray rectangular, sports fields, tennis courts, volleyball courts, BMX, plazas, that kind of, that kind of listing of, of facilities. It's not changing, there we go. Okay, so here's another alternative. You can see, it's just modified some of the items. Um, you can see where the, and I'm sorry, I didn't point out initially, but most of you know, this is the Masonic Lodge building right here. So looking at the other alternatives for this area. Again, other buildings, other locations for other facilities. Quite a variety of options. These will be refined. Um, again, these are just initial concepts so that we can have, start, uh, talking about what could be. Um, but it is important that, uh, from what we've been discussing in the past and tonight, to be able to identify, should we can be considering with the input from the public and assistance with the consultant, should we be considering the Masonic Lodge to stay on site or to have it removed from the master planning process and, and at some point, future demolition? Back to cost considerations. Um, I just want to talk about two related items. Uh, one is what exactly, if we were to keep the building, what would we be looking to keep? Um, as we all know, a portion of the building at one point was partially uh, the old Crescent Valley School. So that used to be a smaller footprint, but two-story building with a, with a basement. Um, and today we have, uh, essentially a basement with a one-story building that has a larger footprint. That's the Masonic Lodge. A lot of the comments we've heard from the public is, well, they like the old Crescent Valley School. I think we all did. It doesn't, no, it no longer exists. Um, what can we do to the Masonic Lodge to make it maybe have more of the feel of the old Crescent Valley School? Um, but you're essentially taking two buildings and trying to merge them together. Uh, in order to do that, you're looking at, uh, doing, it's listed in the pros plan as a capital project for this site. Uh, I think the estimate in the twenty eighteen was four point five million dollars to do that remodel and, and update the parking. And so, again, the estimate that was provided by the consultant that Jennifer just mentioned, one point seven five million, that's just to bring it up to a minimal standard to make it ADA compliant and to, uh, put some restrooms in, in the main floor, which is part of the compliance. And so, if we were to take that four point five million dollars and twenty eighteen dollars, uh, which we can probably all agree is out of date, but even at that level, you're talking about a cost per square foot to do that work of about one thousand four hundred dollars per square foot. Extremely high costs. Um, to get a building that is not the old Crescent Valley School, and you're not gonna get a building that's the Masonic Lodge, because we, that's just not what the, the idea is. The idea is to take the Masonic Lodge, rehabilitate it into something that's not the Masonic Lodge, because we want windows, we want modern equipment, we want modern furniture, we want modern flooring. Um, and we need to, we would need to, uh, remove all the hazardous materials that are in there. Um, if you're looking at a cost today to do the design and the permitting uh, for a similarly sized, uh, well, for, for a building of, uh, modern materials, the cost per square foot for design permitting and construction is around the eight hundred thirty dollars per square foot. So significantly less, still quite expensive, but significantly less. So, um, just some things to consider when trying to decide whether or not it is worth it to keep this, uh, on the site plan for master planning purposes, or to have it removed from the site plan for master planning purposes, and to repurpose this area.
Great, thank you for all of that great information. Um, I will open it up for clarifying questions from council. Council member Henderson?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, director and park manager. Um, so a couple of questions I had, um, on the motion, uh, this motion would be to demolish the building. Uh, and I know it's not a contract, it's just a resolution, but I'm hoping that, um, there would be some thought of uh, using some of the materials that are salvageable from the building in a new building, if possible, to honor the, well, a couple of things, to honor the old growth forest that was used to build that building, because this was nineteen thirteen fourteen, uh, construction. And also to honor the building itself. Uh, it, I mean, it's been changed so much. The nineteen forty-eight renovation, if you want to call it that, essentially destroyed the look of the church, uh, or of the, of the building itself. So, um, I'm hoping that we would at least consider that in any, in part of the demolitions, can have to be done at demolition, with the understanding it's gonna cost a little bit more, I mean, uh, to, um, deconstruct the building and salvage what we can, will cost more, takes a lot more labor, and also does another thing. It, um, we minimize the amount of waste that goes to our land. So there's multiple reasons that we could do it. Uh, the cheapest, not the cheapest option, but it might be the most honoring option that I can think of. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Look?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Uh, when we had the Crescent Creek visioning process and the public came, uh, what were they told about the, um, Masonic Lodge?
The city council would make a decision about its future.
Okay, so, so they didn't really have any input on it at that time, right? Is, is, is that correct? Okay, so, uh, is there, so this is the first opportunity that we've been able to hear from the public is having this resolution come forward. Is, is there a need for a SEPA? Um, any testing or a report for SEPA? Is that, is that involved with this building?
For demolishing it?
For the demolishing, the, or the deconstruction of it?
Just a demolition permit, and we would need to, um, abate the hazardous building materials that are in there, which we would also have to do for a remodel.
Okay. Someone, I got an email today, I think we all did, about a gentleman who suggested that maybe this become a nonprofit project and a nonprofit take this over. Have we considered that at all?
Uh, yes, we, we have walked through that building with nonprofit organizations because they had interest in utilizing the building. Um, or prior to this discussion that started with council. Uh, our feedback that we received from nonprofits was, oh, when they got in the building, wow, it's a lot smaller than they thought. Oh, wow, it's gonna need a lot of remodeling in order to make it functional. The usable area after the ADA remodeling, I think is just, is it sixteen hundred or eighteen hundred? So, yeah, so just under eighteen hundred square feet. And so, the, it was, had been assumed previously by the, many of the nonprofits that we talked with, that, uh, it was a larger area than what it actually is.
Looks larger from the outside, doesn't it? For sure. So, um, so, so this, these preliminary drawings that we've seen tonight of the park, is that going to go back before the public at any time?
Yes.
Is there any way that when it comes back before the public, there could be some sort of, um, potential of what a building could look like and that potential cost I compared to what a remodel for this building would be costing wise? Is there any way to show both of those together?
To revisit the contract with the, um, with the firms for doing the master plan, but it's not, um, yeah, we can do something.
Um, I think one of the primary decision points that's needed in order to move forward with the park is this decision regarding the Masonic Lodge, because there are other user groups that are potentially wanting to have something other than a building there. There's sand volleyball and gardeners and, um, so knowing the decision on the lodge would help the process move forward. And it sounds like what staff is saying is that in, the process was built out to have the decision be now. Um, in order to move forward with what is going to be on that property. Is it the lodge or is it a different use?
Okay, it just would be nice if our citizens could somehow have comment on this. Um, and to look at, you know, the potential of a building, or to look at the potential, like, we're gonna see, I guess, right? We're gonna see a potential park with no building and a potential park with a building.
Yeah, there, there were some in, um, what Jeff had shared earlier. Some had a building, some didn't.
It would, it would be, it would be nice if we could see the cost of a new building compared with the cost of a remodel. And, but for our citizens to see this as well, when they see that, will they see, will our citizens get to look at the park? Because there were different layouts of the park? Will that come back to the public as well?
Yes, um, we are, they are going to refine it down to three, um, kind of options. And we're gonna run it by the citizen advisory, uh, committee first, and then the public at large. And we'll also do another survey.
And then I'll just add, just for a reference point, uh, the, the images, I can bring them back up if you'd like to see, but just for a reference point. Um, if we were to design, permit and construct a brand new eighteen hundred square foot building, based on that eight hundred thirty dollar per square foot cost, that's about one point five. based on that eight hundred thirty dollar per square foot cost, that's about one point five million dollars.
And the thousand dollar per square foot?
The one thousand four hundred dollar per square foot is to remodel the existing building. So that total cost for design permitting and remodeling the existing building in in eight twenty eighteen dollars in the twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty two dollars, sorry, I was going back to the wrong plan. Twenty twenty two dollars for the twenty twenty two pros plan is four point five million dollars.
So four point five million dollars to remodel what we have now. And one point eight is that would hear you say one point eight for a new eighteen hundred square foot building?
One point five million for a new eighteen hundred square foot building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenbergh.
I certainly respect the work that the consultants did and staff did on this. But I think that the public really didn't know that the city was so serious about demolishing that building until this agenda came out. And in that short week, we've heard from several very well renowned people, specifically Rory and Laura Turner, who helped us with the Glenn House when we were thinking about restoring that. And we also learned from other experts that maybe we haven't looked at everything. I think making the decision tonight about demolishing it is is premature. I think when you talk about eight hundred dollars a square foot versus twelve hundred dollars a square foot. And you throw around numbers like, not you necessarily, but when those numbers are thrown around. There's a whole lot of details that can increase one of the other or decrease one of the other. You know, parking sewer hookups, you're gonna have new buildings, gonna have to have new parking standards, all those kinds of things. So when it comes down to it, I don't think the numbers are are really tacked down yet. And I think that the public ought to have a larger or a longer time to look at this and maybe bring in some of their, although the consultants we hired were good. There's also another set of consultants that think keeping the building is worthwhile. Granted, it's not historic any longer, but most of that building's been there for since nineteen thirteen. So I think voting to demolish it tonight is is premature. And that we need to let the public speak more and hear for more experts on it. And I won't be supporting this at all.
Thank you, Councilmember Liggins.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for Public Works Director, Parks Manager. Recently, we did the Crescent Creek Park Survey out to individuals. Do you have some tentative results of what were the most popular things? What were people looking for? And kind of what the, how many people responded to that? And if there was any results in that regarding the Masonic Lodge?
So we had been instructed to keep the Masonic Lodge out of it, or at least that's what. I, we, yeah, so it wasn't part of it. But there were was a lot of value in keeping the nature aspects of it. There the way the questions were worded, they kind of didn't come up as clear. But the top five things that people wanted on the site were number one, sand volleyball courts. Number two, pickleball courts. Parking, restrooms and natural trails. Those were by far the top top questions or top answers. And we had two hundred and seventy seven unique responses.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Langham, the eight hundred thirty dollars per square foot cost. Out of here, you just say design and permitting, was that design permitting and construction of an eighteen hundred square foot building?
Yes, I apologize, it's all three.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rodenbergh.
Yes, getting back to the concept drawing she showed, those are just. They're not cast in concrete concepts, are they? Not that a concept is. I don't think we've heard from the visiting people or the stakeholders. There was a drawing went around Civic Center two or three years ago that was pretty well done. And I really liked it. And I'm not sure everyone's ever had a chance to look at that. And from what I hear that the the public would like, that drawing or rendering, I guess it was just a drawing, I think would appeal to a lot of people. So those ones you showed were not appealing to me at all. And I'm a neighbor and a stakeholder.
And those drawings that I just flashed up on the screen again, that was only some of the concepts that the consultant has prepared. The intent is to have those concepts spread out through the community, through the to the Advisory Committee. And then refine those and then narrow it down and prioritize or recommend rate those as alternatives and then present them again and bring them to council and talk more about them, so.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, thanks for the additional information. So a couple of questions. Doing the modeling, when we get a little bit more than just the rough drafts that you presented, and I get we're early on in it. If we did the modeling and so we had a better concept of what it would look like with a with a color drawings, things like that, I think you were referring to. Can they do that work either with the lodge there or without the lodge? Is one question. The second thing is, if we look at what we're budgeting for enhancing the park. I think there's pros and cons, right? So if it's four and a half million, I'm just general numbers here, four and a half million dollars to renovate the lodge. So it would be useful for people. Compared with potentially one and a half million, if we set a building is still the desired thing there. Then we have, we were potentially might be saying there's three million dollars that we won't have to invest in the park. Not saying that's exact, but I'm just looking at that puts and takes, if you will, based on what we're going to be spending on some things. So I think financially, there's a piece there. I I want to be mindful that we have a lot of public here and I'm guessing they want to be able to add some comments here for us to consider. But is there any other things that we should be think that we haven't looked at or potentially that I haven't thought about from a cost standpoint for the building? Because can we, if we built a new building there, are we going to be able to build one of the same size or greater size if seventeen hundred square feet is not what's needed for people who want to use a building? But there's greater need for that. What would that do to the park? We probably have to set it back, I'm thinking, a little bit more, right? Because that's pretty close to the street and just thinking about new regulations, et cetera, so.
There is a lot to consider about the existing building and renovating that cost wise and location wise. You're right, right now, it's in Pierce County, we have to abide by Pierce County codes setbacks, everything else, we're in the process of annexing it. And then we get to decide as as we, once it's in the city, do we keep property lines? Do we eliminate property lines? Because those have setbacks, but you're right, we know where the front yard is on this. It's it's Bernhard's and it's ninety six. And so, yes, it is fairly close. We haven't assessed if it's too close, but it's very likely it's too close to be kept there if we do demolish and then and then build another building, it would be setback further. I think one other consideration to make is just the timeline of the overall consultant contract and the public outreach process. We were, we're supposed to be through with the Crescent Creek Park Master Plan March of next year. And the consultant's scope didn't include doing anything beyond what we've already done with Masonic Lodge. Anything different? If I hear, I'm hearing that there may be interest to include the Masonic Lodge as is and find out more about the historic nature, hear from other entities about what it might look like. Then we just need to consider how that's going to affect the project budget and the project timeline. I can guarantee you that both of those will go up, be extended.
Is there a timeframe where we would need a, if the resolution's not passed this evening? What's the timeline that they would need for us to say either we keep that building, you don't keep that building?
Well, the three alternatives were going to be presented to the CAC in the July timeframe. So obviously, if it was still undecided about the building, I don't know if that would mean six alternatives, which would add to the budget, I I'm not totally sure how that would work.
And I appreciate that. And I think listening to what our our citizens, our residents here have to say to not see what the interest is, whether to keep the building. Maybe it's not to build a forty or fifty car parking lot, et cetera. And what's the feel of the park, it's gonna be interesting.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. If if we were going to try to go back to the consultant in July, is that what you said?
To the citizen, to the Citizen Advisory Committee.
To the Citizen Advisory Committee in July. And was that going to be, what were you going to go back to them when?
Oh, with like refined concepts of the whole site. So we also, when they heard, like, we've heard neighbors say that when there are, you know, there's not enough parking, stuff like that, and people have to walk along, you know, just there were a lot of things that that they're considering as well.
And were these all these different plans going to be also shown to the Citizen Advisory Committee?
Three of them, yes.
Okay. And then the rest of the community, was there going to be another open house for them?
Yes, and a survey.
And a survey, and when would that happen?
Probably after the CIC meeting, so.
If it happened after we decided whether or not to keep the building or not? We were going to ask them? Okay, thank you. Seems like we should ask them before. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm I'm not seeing any other lights on from council, so I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. If you're in the audience, you can come forward and if you you'll have three minutes. If you can state your full name and home address for the record, please.
In demolition versus saving the structure. Adaptive reuse of the current structure could potentially trigger, be less, excuse me, be less expensive and environmentally more friendly than a new facility. The building as it sits represents significant sink of sequestered carbon. And most methods of demolition and disposal would release that element into the environment. Is there a commitment to offsetting that environmentally damaging action in any new construction? The building is wooden structure on a concrete cinder block foundation. While like most old buildings, the foundation has cracks, the building is not brick and mortar and moves during an earthquake. It has withstood every earthquake for over a hundred years. Yes, it needs repair. What are the alternatives for cost provided for demolition versus repair? And what are they? To weigh the one point seven million dollars seismic study against the value of the structure is folly because absolutely no old historic structure will assess it contemporary day value. And even that, it might not not assess that that once it's repaired. While there is no debate that the original historical integrity of the nineteen fifteen schoolhouse, Mr. Nicholas Van of the State Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation said, there may be significant post-war historic building use as the Masonic Lodge was over seventy five years ago. We don't know what remains of that building because we haven't looked under the envelope. As noted in Gig Harbor, Gig Harbor's Historic Preservation Ordinance Criteria Number Four, the building may reflect elements of the city's cultural, special, economic and political history as members of the Masonic Lodge were prominent Gig Harbor residents and leaders. The membership also reflects criteria number five beyond the original schoolteacher Lucy Goodman. Please note, vote no on this this evening with a caveat that more study be given to make a more informed decision. This is simply a press pause. Let's all get more information. Once the building is gone, it's gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, please state your full name and home address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Tamara Smilinich, one five oh three two Burley Avenue. So just a little background about myself, I'm a realtor. And so I really appreciate architecture. So for all the fans out there, for new or old architecture, I'm behind you. Landscape, I'm behind you. But I agree with many of the comments here on the note that this is a big rush if there is a vote taken, whether to demolish this building or not. And so I just wanted to make that comment clear because I come from a big city called Seattle. And it's all about gentrification, it seems. And yes, we want to recognize historical factors with people that have put their heart and soul into building these or the ancestors that have the material that's gone into it, the old growth wood. And just the scenery, some of these old places do provide to the community, be it you live next to it or you pass through it. But I also do appreciate the new architecture, which we've seen plenty around the Puget Sound. It seems that much of the architecture has a very strong northwestern feel, kind of like this room. With how everything's come together at the ceiling at least. So I just hope that the council can weigh out the pros and cons of at least waiting for this vote so that there can be more citizen input. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming, please state your name.
John McMillan, nine eight one six Jacobson Lane in Gig Harbor, about three lots away from Crescent Creek Park. Just to give you a bit of a background about myself, I've been a Gig Harbor resident for twenty seven years and have been engaged in community projects pretty much the entire time. As an industrial designer, I have created visionary designs for many waterfront projects in Gig Harbor. I've played a part in much of what was built at the Eden Property, such as the Maston Boom at the Eden Dock. The design and installation supervision of the Marine Railway and carriages at Eden, where I am treasurer and one of the founding board members of the of the Gig Harbor Boat Shop. So I can attest to the value of repurposing an older structure, maintaining its history in some manner for the community forever. And we all know that the Gig Harbor Boat Shop is at a site that is, that the city is all proud of. So let's let's think about that and think about our decisions with regard to the Masonic Lodge. From my perspective, it appears that part of the push to demolish the lodge is so that a larger community event space can be built. If so, this could require more parking per city code, which would be a further disruption of the natural environment in the park. I do not think Crescent Creek Park is the place for such a project. This is a quiet neighborhood park with ample parking for activities it is currently designed for. What has not been discussed with the community are the ramifications of a larger building to replace the existing structure or the ramifications of removing it and not having anything there because a new structure can't fit the bill or whatever in that area. If 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 council must vote to demolish the lodge, please do so with the following conditions. Three things, that the scale of the new structure and its design be in keeping with this quiet neighborhood park. Have a structure there, be it brand new or somehow restored historically or kept. But keep it sized to the quiet neighborhood park that it is. And I think that can be done in the community. And I think that can be done and the community be really happy to have a meeting space, even if it is smaller than what we, what we think we need for the park. So the park can't, can't stand anything larger than that, than that footprint. Number two, that there be no additional parking spaces built. And number three, that any work on the park be done in an environmentally sensitive manner to ensure its ecological health is maintained. This is a point made by responders to the recent survey where question five, I know that.
Excuse me, it's been three minutes.
I'm sorry. Question five says, how important do you think these principles are? And of the eight choices, the highest was to maintain the park's natural character and ecology. So I would, please vote no on resolution twelve seventy-eight. Thanks you for your.
Thank you so much. Thank you. If you would state your full name and home address.
Hi, Mary Manning, nine eight one six Jacobson Lane. I have lived across the creek from Crescent Creek Park for twenty-seven years, and I'm on the community advisory committee for the park's master plan visioning process. I represent the native plant garden, which has stood next to the Mason Lodge for twelve years. Crescent Creek Park means a lot to me, and saving this historic structure is something I would like to see happen. I have this sort of speech written out, and I've heard a lot of new information tonight, so it's kind of all a jumble now. I wanted to address just two things in my speech, money and the need for a community arts center. So I'll try to make it make some sense. Jeff talked about a new structure, an eighteen hundred foot, a square foot structure, and what that would cost. But I think one of the issues is that space is really not functional for a community arts center. So maybe I'll just, I'll read what I, my idea for that. So the current structure is small. It may not be useful as a bigger structure. Gig Harbor really does need a community use, community center for arts, education, meetings, et cetera. As a musician and lover of the arts, I'm all for this, but my question is, is this the best place for it? Has the city really considered other spots? And here's an idea. How about the Civic Center green just outside the door? The Civic Center building that we are in right now is somewhat removed from the hustle and bustle of city life. Having a community art center on the green could bring a much-needed people presence to City Hall. When people are close by, they are more likely to drop in and get involved in civic life. The green also seems to be on a high spot, so the building could house parking underneath. This could be a win-win. So anyway, so that's my, my words about a bigger structure. It sounds like the drawings that we saw, a bigger structure is not on the docket right now. But even if, if it's just becomes a parking lot or pickleball, it will significantly change the character of this small historic park. The building that we're talking about is a hundred and ten years old. Gig Harbor is only about a hundred and fifty years old. So the building is probably the oldest, if not the oldest, public structure in town. Preserving is, is more complicated, but a unique and intimate history will be lost. And I hope you will vote no on the resolution tonight and give us some more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and home address for the record.
Yes, Stephanie Lyle, the Director of the Harbor History Museum and Gig Harbor Historical Society. I just wanted to share a little bit of background on the Masonic Lodge as the Masonic Lodge, because I hear a lot of, there's no history here. It's all gone. It's, it was the Crescent Valley School, but it has many, many years as the Masonic Lodge. Here are just a few of the city founders and important people within our city that were members of the Masonic Lodge. Paul Alvestad was a postmaster, one of the first postmasters. Peter Alvestet, Gordy Anderson, Charlie C. O. Austin, mill owner, was also on the city council. Biz Burnham, Bud Conan was the owner of Union Oil. Marshall Danforth, Hugo Finnholm, John Finnholm, Orville Hempfield. Joe Hoots was a construction person, also wrote a pamphlet in nineteen ninety-seven on the history of the Masons. If you ever want to see it, I have it at the museum. A.R. Hunt, Floyd Hunt, who were steam, steam and freight boat captains. Oak Laughthome, the original manager, or one of the early managers of the Peninsula Light Company. Ken Leo Marvin, you might have heard that name with the Veterans Park. Dr. A.B. Monzingo, Gig Harbor Hospital, which is now gone, now fancy houses. Carl Nielsen, founder of Puget Sound Bank, Jean Pearson, past president of the Puget Sound Bank. He was also one of the early town clerks. Dr. Harold Ryan, Reverend Charles Schreier, Hubert Secor, who was a former mayor and owner of Minnerbrook Oysters. Adolf Zamel, Don Zamel of Don's Drugs Pharmacy. You might have seen the Zamel Park name somewhere around town and also on the museum building. Walt Smith had active construction. He was also part of a groups called the Helmsmen, who were a combined group of masons who worked with their communities to do big construction projects and work with the state DOT, our two overpasses. We can credit too much to Walt Smith for getting the DOT on board with that. Sheldon Betty and Dell Stutz, who had a fuel company. Bert Edenberg, who had an auto dealership, and John and Sam Bernhardson. So to talk about the Masonic history in Gig Harbor is to list a who's who of local history. Streets, parks, names, not to mention businesses and community supporters. In the pamphlet about the Masons edited by Joe Hoots and held in the museum archives, the Masons advocated that, quote, "We must make a greater effort to preserve what has gone on before." "The key in Gig Harbor Peninsula area is unique in the richness of its past and for the projects that ordinary people have accomplished and are presently working on." The purchase of the Crescent Valley School and its subsequent modification for the purposes of the Masonic Lodge was likely coordinated by former mayor Hubert Secor and Betty Stutz, who also served on the school board in the nineteen forties. The building had gone up for auction by the school district, but received no bidders. The Masons later purchased it via sealed bid. They had the talent and the time to modify the building, and it was dedicated as a, quote, "New Masonic Temple" in nineteen fifty-one. And I will add that those earliest pictures have windows, not like the building looks today.
It's, it's been three minutes.
Okay. I will just say that to demolish the building is to wipe away much of the history of our community, so I hope that you will postpone this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you would, please state your full name and home address for the record.
Mayor, the council, Steve Parrish, ninety-seven sixteen Crescent Valley Drive, Gig Harbor. I'd like to state that I'm against the proposed destruction. I hope that you guys will vote no to it, especially at this point. My home is adjacent to Crescent Creek Park and about three hundred feet away from the city-owned Masonic Lodge property. The city recognizes the general area in a statement of your own stating that it's still known to longtime residents as the city park. The large open air structures, the natural creek bed, and the specimen trees represent an important historic landscape that embodies Gig Harbor's early rural lifestyle. Within that park, it includes the original school building, built in nineteen fifteen, that has been there well over a hundred years and houses an active preschool even today. I've heard it said of this building that it's not original, that it's, there's been too many changes, that it cannot be on the National Historic Register, or that it's too small for many future uses. However, it is part of the rich history of this town and is there underneath the current metal cladding that I believe that this building can continue to serve the community with purposes after a thoughtful renovation. In the last twenty years or so, the city of Gig Harbor has added additional communities such as Gig Harbor North, Uptown Gig Harbor, they've revamped shopping centers along with additional housing developments and many, many more people. With continuing need for community spaces, would they all need to be built on a grand scale? The Masonic Lodge, the former Crescent Valley School refurbished could be available for smaller scale purposes, including and remaining a preschool. Demolishing, demolishing it now without further thought would not serve our citizens well. Tearing it down would erase the history that it is. The city has made great inroads into bringing the history of this area and with respect to the original people that lived here and reaching back over a hundred years to this school, I would hope that the city would try and preserve that history as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay, I'll turn it over to our online audience. You can press the star nine button on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on this agenda item and open it for council deliberation. Councilmember Wook?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you all so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for speaking. Thank you for the emails that you sent and to those folks who are not here and send emails in. Thank you for those emails. You certainly educated me and enlightened me. And I myself don't think we're ready to make this decision, and I think we need a lot more information. We have citizens who are very concerned about this. So should this be put on the table, I will be not supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, thank you. Like Councilmember Wook, I really appreciate the presentations tonight and especially the community members who took time to be with us tonight and those who sent us emails. I've also learned a lot, and based on what I'm hearing, it does seem to me that there is a little bit of time. I know it will delay things. But there is time to secure more comment from the public. And what I would like us to be able to do is pause this decision and show the public what the park would look like with the lodge, without the lodge, with a new building. I know that will add some expense and some time, but I think it's really important so that our community understands the give and take that we are making. So I will be voting for a pause on this resolution as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I do agree with the previous two speakers. I really want to know, though, I mean, if we decide to pause this, what the, I mean, the schedule's going to be kind of broken, which is okay. Schedules are made to be broken at times. I, I think there's got to be a clear understanding, though, of, okay, if we're going to get more input, what kind of input are we getting? If it's just keep the building at any cost, then I think people really need to know how much that's going to cost as well as understand what they're getting for, well, in twenty eighteen dollars, four point five million dollars. It probably could be close to six or seven million after inflation. I, I think it's critical to preserve history. I think everybody needs to know what the building might look like if it were completely renovated. If it's been so gutted to renovate it, and there's nothing left anyway, what did we get? But I, I think there's a lot of questions that have to be answered, and I, much as I don't like to see schedules slip as an old project manager, I think maybe we need to do a little bit better job of explaining what is coming down the road, what options are there. Because if we say, well, let's keep the building, then we need to know what we're keeping and what we're going to do with it. I think that's going to take a little bit of time.
Thank you. Councilmember Dorset.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, first want to say thank you for everyone who spoke up tonight and also the emails that came in. My family knows this is a city park. I've actually never been inside the Masonic Lodge, so shame on me. But I do love the history that's been shared about this. And it's quite touching. I will be honest as well and say that it's not the most attractive building. Doesn't mean it doesn't have, you know, good feelings and vibes within it, but I would be curious to see what we, what it could be created into, too. Could we still, I don't know, we need more time, is what I think it is. But I also would be curious from council as well as, could we still look at this design basically going around the outside of it and would be able to move forward instead of being as, as one, whether the lodge is destroyed or, or if it were to remain there. Is there a way we can do other things like a pickleball court? Or fix up the parking lot that exists there now? So, only with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
There's a couple of things I have. As far as I know, we have a two, we have a biannual budget. And as far as I know, the only money that we've funded for this park is the visioning process and consultants through the end of twenty twenty-four. So whatever we come up with, it's going to be several years before we get the money to do anything at that park. And with projected reduced revenues, possible reduced revenues in twenty-four and twenty-five, it might be several years, but when we tear that building down next month, it'll be down forever. So I won't be supporting this. Something else that I'm kind of proud of, one of the most business-like things that this council has done since I've been involved is with the biannual budget, which was two years. We also came up with a two-year strategic plan. That's something that the public doesn't always hear about, but that really helps us plan strategically. And I don't need to remind my councilmembers, but I would like the public to know that one of our priorities of the five priorities we have in the strategic plan is to maintain small-town character and historical preservation while growing responsibly. So if that's one of our priorities, I think we ought to pay attention to it. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to everyone here and their comments. I wanted to say thank you to the staff as well for the additional information. I think it was really important for all of us to hear that. What I heard tonight, some of the key things, is that they want to keep the character of the park. And I heard, can we pause for a minute? Because it feels like it's a bit rushed on the decision. And I understand why it was brought forward to us as council members. I too, like many of the people that have spoken, will not be supporting this, this evening. But I really think that there's some, a lot of good work that's happening with the visioning of this park. I think it's really important for us to continue to have strong modeling of what it would look like versus potentially, and I'm not suggesting staff saying this, but potentially demolishing the lodge and then showing nothing in its place. And that's not what we're doing this evening, and I think that's important as well. So again, thank you for everyone who's given us this input tonight. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I concur with several of my council members. I want to thank everybody who spoke. I want to thank the staff for the presentation. This is one of those things that it's my understanding that the demolition isn't taking place anytime soon, but in order for planning, they need to vision whether or not the building is there or not. So I can see why they came to us for this decision. But hearing the letter, you know, reading the letters, hearing the comments, makes me also wonder if we don't need to broaden our scope and look at other options and just pause for a moment. I am, though, also very concerned about, you know, this is taxpayer dollars, the fiduciary responsibility of how much it would cost, the cost per square foot, those types of decisions that we talked about in our study session, I am quite concerned. And then also, if we continue to study this, there's going to be costs associated with doing continued studies, doing continued time. So I do think we need to be good stewards of the funds, but I certainly think that maybe we can pause and decide what can we do that is maybe the most cost-effective. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Barber and Rodenberg, you have your lights on. Did you, okay?
Mayor, if I, may I?
Yes, of course.
I, staff really appreciates all the public's testimony on this as well. I, I want to just make clear, and I think Councilmember Liggins just hit on that, is staff came forward to council at the May eleventh meeting with three options for the lodge. And the, the one that was chosen to move forward tonight was to demo. So that was not a staff recommendation. And I just want the public to know that, that your staff are not sitting here telling council that we want to demolish the lodge. And so there's been some tenor of that this evening. I just wanted
And so there's been some tenor of that this evening. I just wanted to make that, make that clear. I know that the staff team here, we want to do, we want to have the public involved and we want to have everyone involved in the decision and have that be something that's understandable and everyone feels good about. So I just wanted to clarify that. With the public input and the comments from council tonight, there's some options that were jotted down here that we, how we can potentially, how we can move forward in this way, noting that the demolishing of the structure, we're not going to have that decision today. That will require us to go back and look at a consultant contract, et cetera. That is work that we can do. What's important to note here, and I think most of you noted that in your comments this evening, is that there is not a state mandate or any other thing that is forcing us to have this done in a certain amount of time. And so that's a really good thing because sometimes we are bound by time. This is not one of those. So what I'd like to do is be able to come back after hearing from council and work with the staff on some options of how we can move forward with some additional public input. I know we have flash vote. We have a number of other options to engage with our residents that we didn't have a few months ago. And so we'd like to consider how that would be and how we can move forward with some additional input and bring that back to the council. So I, I can't speak for, well, I guess I can. On behalf of staff, we obviously want to do, we want this process to be good and that's why we're undertaking the master plan. It's, it's a very important park and it's a very important decision. And so, you know, we understand the stepping back. We will however, be bringing forward to you extra time requests for additional funds. And then just the little, you know, Jennifer and Jeff, do you have a lot on their plate? And so with the additional work from this, we will need to see how that works with all the other projects that staff were going to undertake. And I know many of you noted that in your comments and I really appreciate that. Because we do want to get this right, but it will have some impacts on some other projects. And we'll be sure to let you know what those are after the decision is made and communicated to the public on how we're going to take additional input.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yes, I did want to echo Director Knudsen's comments. In the work session, we absolutely, as a council, decided that we should probably demolish the building. And I have to say that I was probably one of the biggest advocates to do that. But I'm very proud to say that I changed my mind because I can be educated just like everyone else. So she's absolutely right. It wasn't staff didn't drive this, council drove it. And we all took a better look at it. So surely it wasn't staff.
So I'm not hearing that there is going to be any motion to approve this item. So can we just, what is the official way to, do, do we need a motion to table? Nothing like that?
So just, you just move on to the next business item?
It just moves on and we bring this back at another time?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, council, very much. Thank you, public, for your comments as well, for your emails, your phone calls, and for being here tonight. Really appreciate you. Okay, so moving then on to item three, resolution 1279, authorizing the middle of a conservation futures grant application to Pierce County. Suggested motion move to approve resolution 1270. Oh, I have a, I have a 1278 and a 1279. Would Josh, is it, is it 1279? 1279. And this report comes to us from Parks Manager Jennifer Harrow. Again, it's the Jennifer Harrow Show tonight, everyone.
This one should hopefully be uncontroversial. So, um, we'll see, we'll see.
Yeah.
So this resolution is asking for permission to apply for a conservation futures grant from Pierce County. We have been partnering with Great Peninsula Conservancy, who has done most of the work on the application. And if funded, it would hopefully fund about 90% of the purchase cost of what we are calling phase four of the now Tuolacoth Conservation Area. So it would, it's 11.5 acres north of phase two of the area. And there is, there's ongoing negotiations with the owner who is more interested in selling it for conservation purposes than development purposes. They don't live in town, but, so Great Peninsula Conservancy is working on that. And the match funds would be provided by the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund. So it would be minimal, if any, just some staff time expenses for the city to pursue that grant. So this resolution would allow the mayor or city manager to sign as the receiving agent of, for that property.
Just to add on to what Jennifer said, Director Linghelm has brought up a map of the property that we're requesting the application for. It is directly north of phase two, as you can see here, that has a significant portion of North Creek running through it. So this would be contiguous conservation property that we would be seeking.
Great, thank you. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up public comment on this agenda item. If you are in the audience and you'd like to speak, you can come forward at this time. Okay, I'll turn it to our online audience. You can press star nine on your phone or raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and open it up for council deliberation. I don't know who, that was a tie. Councilmember Henderson?
But I'd like to move proudly to approve resolution 1279.
Second.
All right. Seeing no other lights, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes, 7-0. Thank you, council. And on our final business item tonight is resolution 1276, amending the wastewater comprehensive plan by revising the sewer collection basin boundary between sewer collection basins number 18 and number three. Suggested motion is to move to approve resolution 1276. And this report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Linghelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just wanted to start by just giving a quick overview. We've talked about this topic a little bit already in the recent past. But tonight, this agenda item is proposing a wastewater technical amendment to the wastewater comprehensive plan. It considers four options of how to serve sewer to two parcels that are just located directly west of Gig Harbor High School for a plat that's been termed the Rosedale Plat. As we noted in the agenda bill and we discussed at the April 13th study session, the applicant is requesting the city amend its wastewater comprehensive plan to provide for their option number one, that is the low-pressure sewer main that is served by grinder pumps. And as noted in the agenda bill and resolution, staff is recommending option three, which is a gravity sewer main served by a lift station. Both of the options that, option one, option three, I've been talking about here, have the basin within sewer basin within which the two parcels are currently located, 18, would discharge to basin three. And I apologize in advance, the exhibit A that was attached to the agenda or to the resolution itself, it identified a lot of information, including the basin boundaries. It did not identify what is in the agenda bill, which is staff's recommended option number three. So I'm going to bring up on the screen a picture of what was in the actual recommendation. So just a quick moment. There it is. I'm going to zoom in. It's going to zoom out. It's going to be a little hard to see here for a second. So hopefully that's a little easier to see. It's the same exhibit A essentially that you saw attached to the resolution, only we added the line work and the called out the option three that was located and described in the agenda bill. So staff's recommendation comes from the interest that the future homeowners will benefit from a private gravity sewer, or sorry, from a gravity sewer system, not private, from a gravity sewer system. And it will also benefit the city because the city will not have to possibly take over future grinder pumps that are, that would be proposed under option number one. You, you did see that the applicant's engineer wrote a letter. That's included in your agenda packet tonight. They reference resolution 999 from 2015 that amended basin eight that temporarily allowed low-pressure systems to be used instead of a gravity sewer main. One of the key there is that it was, that resolution was a temporary use of gravity, of grinder pumps. That developer still had to install a dry gravity sewer. That dry gravity sewer is, will likely be connected to as part of our 38th Avenue project. And we will connect their dry gravity sewer to our dry gravity sewer. And so we get a step closer to eliminating grinder pumps because that's our not, that's not our preferred method of conveying sewer. And so the basin eight example did require the plat to abandon their grinder pumps once sewer through gravity conveyance was available. The only other item left in the basin eight example is a lift station needs to be constructed. And so that's, but the, the gravity sewer there is, is all in place. And that's not proposed as part of this wastewater comp plan, technical amendment tonight. So staff continues to recommend that this wastewater comprehensive plan, technical amendment be approved with this exhibit A showing the gravity sewer option three, as noted in the agenda bill. That's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Linghelm. That was good. So the, the example that was provided by the consultant of the applicant was mentioning about the temporary, was referencing temporary grinder pumps. And at that time, the, the contractor landowner had actually put in a dry sewer at the same time?
Correct.
It was that, and that wasn't offered here? Would, did they know that that was an option here that they could put in a dry sewer?
We had discussed that early on and the, they're, well, they can speak to it also, but their response of any gravity sewer in, through this plat would be a challenge to construct and install.
Challenge financially or challenge?
High groundwater table.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up public comment on this agenda item. At this time, according to past city practices, I'll ask the applicant to come forward if you wish. And you'll have 10 minutes to, up to 10 minutes to speak. And if you could state your full name and address for the record as well.
Didn't work with the existing community. So we asked that it be a, just a low-pressure sewer system. And like what was mentioned before on the previous plat Fox Run, where there was a, there was a low-pressure sewer system and there was a gravity sewer system installed. I personally watched that being built. The low-pressure sewer system was installed easily, no problems. The, the deep sewer that was required to be placed, it was about 18 feet, if not, if not more, at the end. And they had groundwater the whole way. And, and it, it was an issue. It was a big cost, but it was agreed to do it. So in this case, it's really not applicable. Regarding the technical amendment that has been put in front of you on resolution 1276, the technical amendment really only talks about changing the basin to basin three. And it didn't include the options that we had. Option ours, are, we put out four different options and we're boiling it down to two. One, low-pressure sewer system, option one. Two is the lift station. And I'm going to give you some quick, I got six minutes. Some quick reasons why, why this low-pressure sewer system is advantageous and where the lift station would not be advantageous. So the, the first item, we went through a litany of things that we had to, had to go through to prove out our point. The first is the city has a policy and they may be changing it right now. But the policy is that each one of their basins should have one lift station. Moving into basin three, is, there is already a lift station on that system. This would add another lift station. And this lift station is just for 31 lots. So there's no other basin that will be served by this lift station. So it's a, usually lift stations are for larger basin areas. The, this lift station, no matter what, you have to, to install a lift station, you have to have a gravity system to it. And that, this system is going to have to be at considerable depth in the groundwater, like as Jeff mentioned, and, and adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas. The deeper you go, you could drain, bring the aquifer towards it. And, and cause, perhaps cause damage to those wetlands systems. The low-pressure system is only installed at five to six feet of depth. It can be installed within a private tract. It can be installed in a private easement. And, and it generally, the way that it's designed will not affect the water table. The grinder pumps for each of the low-pressure systems will be owned and maintained by the individual lot owners, just like a septic system, inspected, just like a septic system. And, and the, the common force main will be owned by the HOA and maintained by the HOA. There's no city costs for the onsite low-pressure sewer system as it will become a private system. And, and this is very And, and this is very similar to the way that, that homeowners inspect septic systems. Um, each grinder pump has enough storage for twenty four hours of, of storage if the power go up, goes out. That was one of the concerns of Public Works. Um, in, in my opinion, I've designed lift stations and uh pump stations. Tend to increase the taxpayer burden. Uh, with additional resources uh being required, including additional staff, maintenance, electricity. Uh, that will be in charge of the uh entire city. The, the low pressure uh sewer syst, or the, the lift station, the gravity system is very deep. And so if any maintenance has to occur on a deep sewer like that, it's going to be borne by the city. Where, whereas, and if you have to dig down eighteen, twenty feet into groundwater to fix a, a broken pipe. Let's say earthquake, an earthquake happens and you have to get to it. You have to go that deep, you have to tear up the entire road, there's a considerable cost to look in the future. And um. One of the, one of the bigger items that, that. We talk about is this has been allowed in many different communities. And, and, and we've designed Fox Run. Fox Run did the low pressure sewer system, it's worked just fine. I discussed it with Public Works and they haven't had any problems with the existing system. Um, and I've designed several others, single family and others, but all over the sound. Big item that I'm getting to is the cost and I, I provide, I think. Uh, I wasn't at the study session, but it was asked that we provide costs and we went through the costs. And considering groundwater and depth of the sewer. The cost for, for the lift station option is two point four five million. Roughly. And that, that's not even taken into account if, if there is excess groundwater that has to be handled. With the, with the low pressure sewer system, we're talking nine hundred and thirty thousand. And a lot less maintenance costs in the future for the city. There'd be very little maintenance costs for the homeowners, it would be a, a very manageable cost. Similar to a, a community septic system. So, and there, lastly, I, I just believe that these systems should just be another tool in, in serving sewer to outlying communities. Um, or like uh. Other residential developments that have septic systems that are bound to fail, this should be one of the options. And um, so in, in conclusion, I just, the, the resolution that you're being given. Has uh, um, only. Has one item on it where, where it is requested. Section one appendix B of the wastewater comprehensive plan be amended to reflect the revisions of, to the wastewater basin map provided in attached exhibit A. We, we are fine with being uh placed in basin three, that's where the sewer went anyway. From basin eighteen, it went to basin three. But I would like to propose or uh, and I brought an amendment to this. Section two to this. To, to resolution twelve seventy six. Uh, section two would say uh, section two. Section two point four two of the wastewater comprehensive plan for the wastewater basin three to be revised. To note allowance of private low pressure sewer and grinder pump systems. Within the boundaries in lieu of constructing a sewer lift station. Plaque covenants shall require individual ownership and maintenance of grinder pumps. And common ownership of, by the homeowner association of the plat to maintain the low pressure sewer system up to Rosedale Street. Where it will become a public force main to the point of discharge. I know that's a lot of words and, and a lot of. Um, but I, I think it's, I think it should be something that you consider as far as cost. Cause this is eighty thousand dollars a lot. To, to the residents as opposed to a thirty thousand dollar, uh, dollar a lot. For, for a low pressure sewer system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this agenda item tonight?
Can I give this letter over?
Oh yes, of course. Um, okay, I'll turn it over to our online audience. Uh, if you'd like to speak, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, wow, I am not an expert in this area, so thank you for uh, for preparing this the way you did. But my question goes to Jeff. What concerns do you have with this?
With.
Do you think this is the best option? As, as far as, you know, doing this, um, setting it to switching to the outfalls, um, low pressure system, gravity fed.
We feel gravity system is the best option. We understand there are challenges in, on these parcels due to the high groundwater table. Um, but we still feel that that's the best option, we continue to push for that. Uh, and that's been our recommendation every time we're asked to consider low pressure grinder pumps. When. Gravity sewer is feasible.
Okay. Um, also just on the um, section that he was talking about the cost back from the city, if there were to be a line that breaks. Um, do we have an idea of what that might cost to? I guess it all depends on when it happens, but if it happened today, what could that, you know, or, you know, once the project's completed, if it happened more in the short term?
There's a lot of variables in that, I mean, is it in the roadway, is it out of the roadway? This would likely be mostly, if not fully, within the roadway. So that adds cost, uh, again, high groundwater table would add cost to doing maintenance and repair. If we had to get into the joints or repair a pipe that was fifteen, seventeen, twenty feet underground. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, direct question to Director Langham. I, I know that we talked about it at the study session, probably be good to uh go over it now. Again, the, the potentials that the city at some point in the future might have to take over thirty one grinder pumps. And then somehow come up with thirty one agreements with thirty one landowners. And if ten of them say, take your agreement and don't know, go where. Uh, I, I think that's a huge thing here that wasn't really brought up. I, I understand there's uh, our engineering challenges for building this in this area. Maybe this isn't the best area to build homes, you know, the high groundwater. If that's the decision though, I, I think that. Uh, the city needs to understand that it could be very costly in the future for us to take over that system if that was ever mandated. And apparently there is that risk of that. And I, I think, I, I think that's something that we really need to take into account here is that there could be a much larger long-term costs. As far even a legal cost of trying to get all these, all these agreements with thirty one landowners. That, that would be, I don't even know how we would do that, it would be a challenge at best.
Agreed, uh, Councilmember Henderson brings a very good point, we did talk about this in depth at the study session. The, there is uh, an obligation for the city to take over uh grinder pumps uh on private property. If the homeowner is not able to or unwilling to do that. Uh, the city has looked at other considerations. Um, because we have another basin that is both gravity fed and grinder pump fed. And uh, there are significant challenges for other reasons uh on that system. And we've just been trying to figure out if we were to take over about fifteen grinder pumps, what would that look like? And the homeowners are so far split on whether or not they would even want us to do that. And so then you have to ask, well, if we're required to, then we get into all sorts of legal challenges of. That say half want us to, the other half say stay out of my business. Because then we have to get into electrical systems, because where does the grinder pump get its service from? Like it's from the panel, so is that the city's? And then the city would have to say, okay, well now we're going to start charging you a surcharge because we don't. It's not in our, our, our fee schedule to go operate and maintain grinder pumps. So then we're going to be talking about, well, we're going to come and revisit sewer fees. And say, well, here's your base sewer fee and then, oh, if you have a grinder pump, there's going to be a grinder pump surcharge added onto your bill. I could see that, that's not in the books today, but I could see that is immediate response to, for the staff would have and be approaching city council. To change sewer utility rates to account for additional effort needed to manage grinder pumps.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Director Langham, what would be the conditions in which the city would be required or asked? Or forced to take over those thirty one grinder pumps?
All those vary, I wouldn't want to get into a, a big legal debate or discussion about what those conditions could be. But um, i- it's, it's something that ecology holds the key to, Department of Ecology. Uh, they get to decide uh how we operate our system. And so if they would say to us, City of Gate Harbor, you need to do this, then uh unless we have a separate agreement, otherwise then we would be required to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, yeah. Um, and thank you for both presentations. Because of the legal and financial constraints or responsibility of the city. I move to approve resolution twelve seventy six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I just want, I'm sorry, I wanted to just clarify the exhibit A that was shown on the screen. Uh, that's the exhibit that we're requesting being used as the adoption, uh, exhibit A within the resolution.
Do I need to make note of?
No, you can just adopt the resolution by the number and that will include the new map that's been provided.
All right.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Rodenberg, your light was on? That's okay, sneak in. Um, okay, I see no other lights, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Um, our next item of business is our staff report. The opioid, opioid abatement council interlocal agreement, and this report is from our city administrator Katrina Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor, I will gladly turn this over to city attorney Daniel Kenny.
All right.
Hey, it's the item we've all been waiting for. Thanks for your patience. Um, uh, so I do have a short uh PowerPoint presentation. Um, that was put together for a group of attorneys and then elected officials and representatives of cities in Pierce County. Dealing with the opioid settlements that you all have approved. Um, if you'll recall, and this is in the agenda bill, there were two sets of settlements in the opioid litigation. Um, that you've approved being part of, um, the distributors and then the pharmacies and others. Um, one more recent than the other. As a component of that, you all approved at the, in the first instance, the one Washington MOU. So that's been in your packet uh multiple times now, it's been signed, you are a part of that. And so what that does is that brings together all of the cities in Washington that do qualify for these dollars. It was the cities over ten thousand people. Um, uh, to have an understanding of how this is all going to work over the next, now I forget, twenty years, seventeen years, something like that, seventeen years. Um, and one of the components of that one Washington MOU was that. Uh, different areas within the state needed to create these councils to oversee what's going on. Those council, well here, I should put the PowerPoint up, uh, that would be useful. Okay, so uh, we're going to talk about the Pierce County opioid abatement council. The opioid abatement council is what was required by that uh one Washington MOU. And so the Pierce County region, which is the county and the jurisdictions that qualified for the money. All got together to put together this agreement um that we're going to ask you all to approve next time. Um, and this is giving you just a quick outline of what's included in that. Um, so the nature of the council, so I'll just quickly fly, uh, fly through these. Um, it fulfills the requirement of the MOU, so we're going to check a box of something that we've already agreed that we would do. Um, the membership is from each of those jurisdictions, you can opt out. Um, but city administrator Knutson would gladly represent the city, I think, if appointed in, in those meetings. Um, and then um, it uh does not create a separate legal entity. Um, it fulfills the dashboard and publication requirements. Again, one of the administrative oversight features of this council is to put forward information to the public. So each city doesn't do it, they're clustering it, so it's a, it's a useful tool that way. Um, it's an oversight body, it does not get involved with how you choose to spend your money. And so this is not a, a group that is going to start telling you the money that's coming in the door should be spent here or there. If you're recalling that MOU as well, there were many pages at the end of the different types of things you can use your money for. Um, as long as you're doing that, it'll go up on the dashboards and it'll be published, uh, publicized through uh the, this uh commission. So uh, again, you're not losing your control over your money. That remains with you. Um, and then uh, there, there's an administrator, somebody to kind of manage all of this. Um, and they chose the Pierce County auditor, trying to find somebody that was, um, as I understand it. Not really involved and not really political and just somebody that can do paperwork. No offense to the auditor's office, that's my understanding. Um, and it sounds like a great plan to me. Um, and so uh, members, uh, again, so there's membership. So the, the city can send somebody, can send an alternative, uh, alternate. Um, there's could be staggered membership that'll get sorted out at the first meeting. Um, so that there's not just a complete rollover for all the member cities. Um, there'll be a chair and there will be occasional meetings, it will not be that much. Um, and so whoever is pushed forward by the city as the representative for the city will uh hopefully choose to attend. You don't have to, again, you can not participate. Um, but if they do, it'd probably be about a once a year type thing. Um, and so when we bring this back to you in June. Um, I think we will, I'd be asking for approval for the mayor to sign the agreement and then also to appoint. Um, somebody to be the representative for the city. The reason that we're going to bring it back to you in June is that all the other cities are having a first touch like this. There may be small revisions that are proposed through that process. There is already one that is not in the materials that you had in front of you, we'll highlight that for the next one. Um, in my opinion, it is an inconsequential change, but you will know exactly what that is and what's before you. So we don't want to move too quick because there might be revisions and everybody has to sign the same thing. Um, so the duties again, so it's oversight, it's got the annual review, the reports in the dashboard that I talked about. Then hearing complaints and that's complaints in, internal, so between the bodies. So everybody wants to make sure that everybody's spending the money on the proper things that are outlined so that nobody loses money. Um, but again, uh. Un- unlikely to happen, because you're going to have a process on that. Um, so administration, again, through the auditor's office, so they're going to schedule the meetings, they're going to make the reports public, they're going to create the dashboard. I assume that's going to be some sort of website with interactive features uh and a report um for the annual meeting. And so again, they're just going to be an administrative body taking care of a lot of the. Checking the boxes that you would need to do anyway, and so everybody's doing it through them. So there is a cost involved in this. Um, this was already part of the MOU that you all approved and that the city signed in as a part of. And that's ten percent of the funds that come in. Um, on the call that I was on, there was an acknowledgement that. That might be more than is necessary, but they just don't know yet, right? And so that's a pre-existing ten percent. Um, if there is leftover money, that'll get reallocated back to the cities in the same proportion that it went there. So um, that's a maximum, we'll see how the auditor uh does it, what it takes to get those systems up and running. Um, there'll be itemized invoices and um, and again, it's built on that prorated amount that you're putting in. Because not every city was getting the same amount of money. So that's the quick rundown on it, it'll come back to you again, an agreement. And um, somebody to be uh appointed to be the representative for the city uh on the next agenda bill sometime in June. Um, does anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Martin, thank you so much, city attorney.
Yeah, thank you. So if a city deems that they may not have the resources that they need for their. But have yet received funding, are they able to allocate that funding, say, you know, from Gate Harbor, say to Tacoma? That's where we think the greater need might be, that they could do something like that within this MOU? I'm not saying that will be the case, I'm just wondering about. I'm not saying that will be the case. I'm just wondering about. Does that make sense? So we say we receive funding, and yet there's certain needs that we have that we just don't have the infrastructure to support. And that there's other entities within, say, Pierce County that would have that, where we would have an MOU with them provide those services to people.
So absolutely, and I think at some point, you all are going to have discussions about how you want to spend this money, who you may or may not want to partner with. I know that there's a lot of discussions about partnerships with this money all over the state because of exactly that. The money that you get is is, it's good, real money, but it it's not going to hire, you know, a full-time, you know, intervention, treatment, whatever it might be, but it might with a couple other cities. Or maybe there's a center that gets created for the whole county. World is your oyster on that, but not impacted by this agreement.
Yeah, I saw that there was a, I mean, there's a lot of things that this money can be used for, and I probably have no doubt that we will be able to use it here. But just wanted to make sure we have that flexibility.
Yeah, that remains within your wheelhouse to decide how to partner or not or do anything.
With with the funding that we're going to be receiving, again, it's through, there's multiple settlements that are going through this pot of money. There's also one that is not subject to this, that we already have received our first allocation of that is in its own separate fund. Based on discussions within the budget last year, where we were looking to utilize those funds as part of the Housing Health Human Service Program Manager. And that is an allowable expense. And so we look forward to having those conversations with council as this progresses.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor. Refresh my memory, do we know how much we're going to be getting? I sound like Trina said that there's other lawsuits still coming through that we don't know yet how much we're going to be getting.
Yeah, so I I don't have the numbers in front of me, so take them with a grain of salt. But it was roughly the same for the two buckets that were created in the first two sets of settlements. I think it was about two hundred and seventeen million for the cities. There is a portion of that that came off for the attorneys. We attorneys always get paid. And then, and then there's, there's the the ten percent here that we're talking about tonight. In that MOU, there was the percentage allocation for each of the cities that, and there was a calculation how they got there. So you can use that number, that percentage allocation, point zero eight two five percent or whatever that was for Gig Harbor. With that two seventeen, understanding that there are portions coming off of that two seventeen, so that, that that's not an accurate number. There was, I believe the website, the Attorney General's website even lists exact dollar amounts. So you could go to that one. I've been there many times. It's a great resource. It's got all the different settlements, all the different settlement agreements, the national agreements, the MOU, and I think that there's spreadsheets. And then you can also see who's opted into all the different settlements from a city perspective. We're now beyond those hurdles, so, but I think that's still up there.
And that was all spread over seventeen years of payments, right?
And a li- a little bit top-heavy for the second one. Yeah.
Okay, great. I don't see any other lights. Thank you very much for that presentation. Looking forward to having that come, come back. I will open it up now for council reports and comments. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, I wanted to report that Saturday morning, Councilmember Rodenberg, Lichens and I attended a presentation about the Harbor Hill Environmental Sanctuary at Heron's Key. The sanctuary is made up of two ponds behind Heron's Key and just below Harbor Hill. And the residents of the area have basically gotten together to create an environmental sanctuary for more than a hundred species of birds and wildlife in the area. They're also doing natural plants in the area. And so far, the community has raised more than three hundred thousand dollars to improve the area. This summer, they will start to, to do those improvements with their first phase. And they'll be paving a walkway around the ponds and installing the pipes and such that are necessary for irrigation and also lighting. There will be more fundraising coming to actually put the lights on poles. No, but there will. There's more fundraising to come. But it's a really beautiful area. The other thing that I think is really interesting that they're doing is the members of the community are working with the school district and especially with Swiftwater Elementary to create educational opportunities for young people. They're working with a couple of universities that have degree programs for park rangers. And they're hoping to be able to bring a couple of park rangers to the community for internships to work with young people and provide educational programs around the sanctuary and hope that those can expand to other parks in the area. So I think that we all thought it was a really wonderful opportunity. And I want to encourage everybody to go over and check out the ponds, go for a walk and support them when they come to do their fundraising for the future pieces. It's really cool.
Thank you, Councilmember Look.
Yes, thank you. That's a nice project. It's going to be wonderful. I'm just following up on our resolution or our proclamation tonight for Public Works. If citizens have been around town and have seen how this spiffy this town looks, it's because our Public Works and Operations folks have been out there mowing and weeding and it looks really, really good. So thank you to everybody who's been out there working so hard to, to make our city look beautiful. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Councilmember Lichens.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I attended a couple of really interesting meetings in the last week. First, I wanted to give a report for Thursday, May eighteenth. I attended the Pierce County Regional Council. We had a couple of interesting presentations. They did a extensive legislative review impacts on counties and cities. We heard from Brim Brady of Pierce County talking about what we'll be talking about. All of the legislation that's been passed around housing in particular, the budget, the transportation, and how cities will be impacted on that. And what was interesting about it is it was a presentation of this is what's going to be coming, but then we're going to revisit it and talk about best practices. And maybe how amongst communities and cities in the region, we can share our ideas on how to address these new requirements, in particular regarding missing middle and affordable housing. We also had a presentation from Pierce County Human Services. And we learned about the county comp plan to end homelessness. There was an extensive presentation on the point in time count that happened this last January. And I'm going to send to council so that everybody has it. There was a really interesting one-page summary talking about what they found on the point in time homeless count that they did. They tried to do it on the coldest night. Volunteers from every city, every community go out and come together to try to find and count homeless. It's a point in time. It's required annually. And I know that the executive Darmeyer talked about it. It's one of his initiatives. He gets out and does it. I've been involved in one. And I know others up here have. They're looking for volunteers always. But it was interesting. They brought some statistics that I'm going to share the link to about how fifty-nine percent of those who are homeless are living in emergency shelter, six percent in transitional housing, six percent in vehicles, fourteen percent they couldn't find, but only about fifteen percent of those who are homeless are living outside. So the numbers that we're seeing outside were not representing. There's quite a few people who are living with housing insecurity that that we don't necessarily see. And they talk about the importance of it. It was interesting, thirty-seven percent were affected by mental illness, twenty-nine percent by chronic health condition. Many earned income, almost a third. The number one reason for becoming homeless was a family crisis. So no affordable housing was number two, and eviction or mortgage foreclosure was number three. So it just takes you, you know, learning this story. So I really want to share this information and I'll send it out to everybody. It was, it was a really fascinating discussion. And then the last thing is we heard about the housing targets. And we talked about with the growth management, how there is this new HAP tool from Department of Commerce and how our numbers for housing were almost going to double. Well, they did some adjustments to the HAP tool and they voted from the Growth Management Council. And our numbers, we had to vote to redo them, actually went down a little bit for Gig Harbor. Originally, we were going to need about a thousand new units over the next twenty to thirty years. Now it's about nine hundred. It's just under nine hundred. But it's now by income band allocation. And so looking at the initial income bands and you look at the average income, I want to say for Gig Harbor, it was around a hundred and three thousand dollars. That very little of our housing and existing stock and what we're going to need to do moving forward is going to be affordable. And it's not, when we're talking about affordable housing, we're not talking about low-income housing. We're talking about, so it's not more than a third of the average income of a person living in Gig Harbor. So what we're going to be needing to look at, and we'll be talking about this going forward in study sessions with our housing need assessment, is what are we going to need to do within our policy? What are we going to need to do to help make it more attainable to build more affordable housing? And it's a very complex issue with a lot of different things. And of course, we're a government, but we can't, if we say, okay, you can make affordable housing, we can incentivize it. We don't build it. It's a free market society. So there's a lot of moving pieces. So it'll be interesting. And then the other thing, just real quickly, is I went as a part of the Sister Cities Committee last Monday and we did a tour at Voyageur Elementary with several of the school board members, the superintendent from the school and several Sister City members. And we went to the Barnahagen. It's a nature preschool. And it's a pilot program. It was one of the most uplifting, fun things. The teachers love it. It's been incredibly successful, and it's one of the things that they do in Norway, starting at age one until age five. And so we're looking at doing, when the sister city with Norway moves forward, we're looking at doing some Zoom and teacher exchanges so they can learn how to incorporate each other's ideas. So it was really exciting. It was great. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Let's have a couple of things. The event that Councilmember Barber spoke of was about the sanctuary, quite interesting in the interpretive part and the educational part. They're going to have signs throughout the the walkway and everything. And just as a show of how generous this community is, there's a company here in Gig Harbor, Bailey and Bailey, that it's going to do all the engraving of the stainless signs or the interpretive signage, free of cost. So it's, and they've also made the same offer to the city when we get around to putting interpretive signs through our new nature reserve. The other thing is, it just occurred to me when I was looking here, is at the end of March and through April, with a hot topic, it seemed like we talked a lot about was commissions and advisory boards. And we talked a lot about that in council. We had public comment, talked about it in work sessions. And some of what the city clerk Steckler told us about was that the the requirements for each one of these commissions and each one of these advisory boards. And I think in that meeting, we kind of asked staff with coming back to let us know what what commission, what are the requirements? They have to have architectural degree. Do they have to live in the city? Do they have to live in the greater Gig Harbor area or what it all was? And during that conversation, I think you mentioned that there was three or four commissioners or advisory members that weren't. And you said that you're going to get back to us and maybe we would have to amend those those lists. So we haven't seen that yet. So I'm asking Director Knutson to direct staff to get that to council. I, they vary so much in what's required. I'd like to have it a little bit, maybe one page that we could read. Because I know there's some openings now. I know there is on planning, commission, maybe some others. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We will get that to you.
Great, thank you. Any, I don't see other lights. So anyone else?
Mayor, may I add on to something Councilmember Lichens said?
Yes.
For anyone that's in in the room today or watching online, there will be on June first, the council will be joining the planning commission for their meeting and it will be on housing specifically. And at that meeting, Shape will be there as well as the consultant that's working on the missing middle work and and Community Attributes, who's working on our housing needs assessment, will also be there. So it would be one-stop shop for everything that's going on housing-wise. And a lot of that that will be driving portions of the comp plan. So to build on that, would encourage folks to come and attend or watch online and learn about all of this with us.
Yes.
It is.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. We really encourage people to come, come to that. Announcement of other upcoming meetings is attached to this agenda this evening. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight and thanks to those online.